Department is Commerce.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Nice to see you. Sorry, I know you got pushed back before, so we're trying to get you in here, you know, so please identify yourself for the record and proceed.
Good afternoon. My name is Harold Epps. I am the Director of Commerce. I am pleased to be here today presenting testimony for the fiscal year 2017 operating budget. To my right is Karen Fegley, the Director of Neighborhood and Small Business, and to my left is the Director of OEO, Angela Dal Burton. Before I start, I would like to say that I am happy to have the opportunity to meet with many of you individually in the first three months as Commerce Director, and I look forward to working with members of City Council in order to accomplish the many goals that the department has laid out. As you all know from our discussions, we at the Commerce, Department of Commerce, have an ambitious agenda, and we must do it in partnership. The total Commerce Department operating budget request is $103.9 million excluding aviation, who will present their budget at a separate hearing. The general fund portion of this request is 22.1% or $22.9 million, which includes $15 million for the Pennsylvania Convention Center subsidy and $500,000 for the Delaware River Waterfront Corporation. Net of these past bills, the Commerce Department is requesting $7.47 million for FY17 to the general fund. In the past few months, the Department of Commerce has laid out the following objectives for our work: to continuously and relentlessly pursue Philadelphia as a globally competitive city where businesses succeed; to recruit and retain a diverse set of businesses, ensuring that all Philadelphia neighborhoods are where employers flock, entrepreneurs thrive, and innovation abounds; to foster economic opportunity for all Philadelphia businesses, to ensure that contract recipients and their workforce are reflective of Philadelphia's diversity; to provide high-quality and timely customer assistance to new and existing Philadelphia businesses; to partner with workforce development programs and local businesses on talent development in order to ensure that all Philadelphians can find and retain living wage jobs; and finally, to ensure that the department's financial resources are invested and distributed in a fiscally responsible manner and to provide optimal services through a diverse, effective, and efficient team of employees. Philadelphia's economy today is vibrant and robust, and opportunities abound. There is probably no time like the present to capitalize on all the success that Philadelphia is experiencing. Philadelphia ended 2015 with an unemployment rate of 5.4% through December, reducing the annual unemployment rate from 2015 of 7%. This marks a 36% decrease in unemployment since the peak of the recession and the lowest unemployment rate for the city since 2007. Additionally, the number of jobs in Philadelphia have grown by nearly 5% since 2009 during the longest sustained growth period since the 1980s. Our population is growing year over year. We also are now a world heritage city. The Democratic National Convention is coming along with dozens of other major conventions. We must leverage this growth such that it is shared by all Philadelphians in all neighborhoods. But if we are to succeed in continuing this growth and sustaining this success, we must do something about the poverty rate in Philadelphia. Philadelphia's official poverty rate hovers around 26%, the highest poverty rate of the 10 largest cities in the country. In order to combat poverty in this city, we must help create living wage jobs. Based upon some quick math, economists have told me that it will take between 15,000 and 20,000 decent-paying jobs to reduce the poverty rate by one point. In order to create jobs, we must have strong businesses and even more businesses. We also must ensure that the workforce is ready for these jobs. The majority of the work that the Department of Commerce will carry out in the next year, whether a continuation of past programs or new initiatives, will be around improving the business environment in Philadelphia. That includes neighborhoods, startups, new businesses, international businesses, existing businesses, and expanded businesses. We will focus on all of these areas. The Office of Economic Opportunity will work to increase MWD-SBE income from city contracts from $302 million in FY15 to $320 million in FY17 and a goal for fiscal year '21 of $370 million. Increasing the capacity of MWD-SBEs will also lead to more diverse workforce. We have also made a decision to house a talent development unit at the Department of Commerce. In the past, we have left most of the workforce development work to our partners such as Philadelphia Works and Philadelphia Community College, but we are now going to play a more proactive role in convening all of the partners and building bridges between employers and job seekers. After hearing too many times from our employers that they have job openings to fill and cannot find qualified employees to fill them, we know that we need to do better. The budget that you have before you includes many initiatives that I know you have much experience with, such as storefront improvement programs, Office of Business Services, Startup PHL, increasing the capacity and participation of women and minority-owned businesses, and more. I am joined today by my senior staff and would be happy to provide further detail and answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for that introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Epps. Let me just, there's a number of councilpeople that have questions, so let me just ask quickly, following up on your statement about the job growth versus the poverty rate increase, in some way that seems contradictory. Is it the type of jobs that, and that lower-income people aren't being able to attain those jobs? Is that a short way of saying it?
That is my conclusion, and we are still analyzing. Let me also say that unfortunately, in addition to our high degree of poverty, we have such a low degree of degree attainment beyond high school, that be a two-year degree, associate degree, or any kind of certificate that will give you the competitiveness required to compete for some of the higher jobs. So we've got some work to do to lift the educational level and therefore a place in which people enter the workforce.
So it's all connected, as we will, and so I assume those jobs are jobs that may, the increase in jobs, a lot of them are college-educated required jobs?
Not all of them, not all of them, but when you've got a 55% dropout rate from high school, and 67% of your population has no certificate or degree beyond high school, then it makes their competitiveness for some of their higher-paying jobs, whether they be what's historically known as blue collar or white collar jobs, difficult to obtain.
Got you. So still some work to do, obviously.
Still some work to do, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
But we are committed that we can make progress.
Right. Thank you. Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to each of you. Let me just quickly start by thanking you, along with your staff, Karen, Yvonne, Nazra, Dwayne, and the whole team that I bother all of the time, but thank you so very much for always being responsive and answering our questions. And I want to say a particular thanks. People were familiar with the Cardone Industries circumstances, and they read the story, but definitely want to reassure the community at large that our Commerce Department immediately took a proactive role in bringing all interested parties to the table to see how we could form further partnerships so that we could control the loss of jobs, and I want to thank you for that, too. Let me start with, my first question is that you mentioned your interest in recruiting, retaining a diverse set of businesses, and ensuring that all Philadelphia neighborhoods are where employers flock, entrepreneurs thrive, and innovation abounds. With that in mind, let me ask you, has there ever been any sort of study regarding tax credits and abatements that we have overall? Not sort of one, because I hear about the 10-year tax abatement, you know, quite often, but has the city of Philadelphia ever conducted a study to analyze all of the incentives that we offer, to cross-reference how many jobs and/or businesses have been created, and if so, do we have any of those numbers?
Councilwoman Parker, I don't, do not have that historical perspective in my 101st day, but I can tell you from the private sector, and having led the tax task force for the city in 2009, I can quote the following, then I'll ask one of the deputy, senior director, Dwayne, if he has anything to add, and that is, "From a tax perspective and business competitiveness, Philadelphia is one of the most taxed cities to business with 19 to 21 taxes," that's how many we had six, seven years ago, "more than any other city, and the overall tax burden was higher than all of our Northeast competitors except for New York City." So we enter the game of competitiveness at a somewhat historical disadvantage. Now, as it relates to recruiting businesses right now, there is a little state across the Delaware River called New Jersey, and the southern part of New Jersey, led by the governor's intent to redevelop Camden, has provided them with hundreds, tens of millions of dollars for incentives. That is one of the areas of our challenge in competing, but we're holding our own. We've got some things that are working in our advantage, our 101 universities, our proximity to Washington and New York, our lifestyle, our ability with ground transportation, and our talent make us very competitive, and we have to offset that with two challenges, one being taxes and the other one being our K-12 education system.
So one, and I appreciate your response, and the purpose of my question was to see whether or not there had been one sort of document or an assessment of all of the tax credits and abatements offered in the city of Philadelphia.
We have not, under this administration, we have not done that, but we intend to do it.
Thank you. The next question is something that I'm very passionate about, and you and I have talked at length about, and that's increasing CTE participation, very encouraging in your testimony. You talk about your goals with working with the school district. How do you intend on collaborating with them to do it? And that's one. The next question, because I want to be quiet and listen, I want you to just give a quick overview of your work in the private sector that you did along with our Chief Diversity Officer, Nolan Atkinson, before both of you were members of this administration, and working with the chamber to develop your sort of diversity card that businesses use. So one, first question, CTE, next about the diversity.
I'm still in the acronym, so I'm sure I can answer the question, but what's CTE? So four months ago, we had no people in Commerce who, the way I said is, who got out of the bed with workforce development being their first thought. We now have one onboard and the other one we made an offer to, and she accepted, and will start in late April, early May. So we'll have two people that their work, their first thought is, how do we get all of the constituents to the table to get better outcome from our very, today, disjointed, often redundant, expensive workforce development activities? We got a lot of stuff going on, but we're not getting the kind of return. One thing I've learned in this job over 100 days is Commerce has great capacity to convene on all things business, and we're going to use that convening power to get everybody to the table to figure out ways to get better return. One of the things we have to do, because we know today, there are jobs available in Philadelphia, but they're not being matched up with the resources.
Career technical education is what you're referencing.
And all kinds of jobs, including career technical. Now, that's the area that we've got to do a much better job. We've got a national, a state, and a city issue where we've been so geared toward four-year education that we've got an imbalance with the number of people that are oriented toward or being supported and reinforced to go get technical education and then go get a job. And it's unfortunate, we've got a lot of people who are going to four-year universities, coming out with $75,000, $80,000, $90,000, $100,000 with debt, and it's taken them up to my age to pay it off.
And the final question, sir, your work in the private sector along with Mr. Atkinson and the diversity card with the chamber.
So I've been here eight years, and my first notice when I got here was that for a city to be as diverse as it was, there was nowhere near the level of participation by people of color or women at the highest levels of public or private institutions. That's true in our city government, that's true in our universities, that's true in our private sector. So we tried to figure out a way to get people to at least have the ability to determine where they were. We developed a five-pronged assessment tool, some of us called it a report card, that asked institutions to measure themselves against some predetermined criteria in five categories, and then, once they did that, this was an autonomous self-reporting tool that asked five questions. What is the composition of your board of directors? What's the composition of your C-suite, your senior executives? What's the composition of your workforce in general? What's the composition of your procurement, contracting, and finally, your philanthropy giving? The typical profile of an institution in Philadelphia would give, and then we asked you based upon criteria to rate yourself green, I am above average, yellow, I'm average, and red, I'm below average. The typical profile gave you the following, that most companies or private institutions got a yellow or a red in the composition of their board, most got a yellow or a red in the composition of their C-suite. Because Philadelphia is a majority-minority town, most got a green in employment in general. They got a yellow or a green in procurement spend, and of course, a green in philanthropy giving. So on a pyramid, just like Maslow's hierarchy needs, at the top of the house is where we have the problem. Again, we have it in the city government, we have it in any of our institutions of higher learning, we have it in the private sector, and that's one of the biggest areas of opportunity for this region at large, and that is to make sure we've got representation in all forms of our institutions at all levels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Taubinberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Epps, thank you and congratulations, and I've enjoyed working with your staff, and you may be very blunt about it even beforehand, as my 23 years with the Northeast Chamber of Commerce, you've always given, the department has always given the best service, and I look forward to working with you very closely in the upcoming administration. But I do want to report something, and it bothered me to no end because of my background in Chamber of Commerce work. Very excited and honored with this new position. I got my business cards, that's great, it's important for councilmen to have business cards, but when I look where they were made, they were printed in New Jersey. And upon further investigation, I found that this contract, this six-figure contract has always gone to New Jersey firms. As a former president of a Chamber of Commerce, particularly the Northeast Chamber of Commerce, I know at least a dozen printing operations in this city that would want to bid on this job and would love to have a chance. I also found out through Procurement Department, only, there was only 112 Philadelphia firms that have gotten, out of the 372 contracts that are given, 112 went to Philadelphia firms. But to be very blunt, that's not very many. I met with the Procurement Department to discuss this issue, and they said they have trouble contacting and connecting with Philadelphia-based businesses and getting the word out. Since the Office of Business Development is clearly in your office, and what your department does, is there a way that you could monitor this so we could make sure that every Philadelphia firm knows about contracts that are coming up? I think it's very important to do business with people who do business with us, and they are our taxpayers, and to help employment in our own backyard is so very serious.
So two-part response, I will respond, and then I'll let Ms. Burton go where I can go, and that is having run a company here in Philadelphia. So I learned from that that part of the procurement system requires the contract to go to the lowest bid.
Yes.
And it does not give much of any favoritism to it being Philadelphia-based. I don't know what legalities we would have to go to to change that, but I think it's something we ought to take a look at, because we have what I'll call a lot of leakage outside of Philadelphia that, under ideal terms, we would like to see done differently. We have substantial outreach capability, and Angela, I'll turn to you, and have you respond to the Councilwoman. I'm sorry. I'll turn to Angela to respond.
Thank you, Councilmen, and members of council. My name is Angela Dal Burton. I'm Executive Director for the Office of Economic Opportunity and Deputy Commerce Director. Councilman, you're asking a question with regard to the city's policy that endorses local business enterprise, and I've worked with and spoken to the Procurement Commissioner, so I'll speak in general terms about that policy, and then also the outreach that I believe the Procurement Department will certainly share in depth with you next week when they testify. So there is a preference for doing business with local companies. Transactions that are less than $1 million, local businesses receive a 10% preference. Transactions over $1 million, local businesses, those that are in the 191 ZIP code, receive a 5% preference. And the number of transactions that the Procurement Department actually executes with its public works, which 70% of the contracts awarded are awarded to local businesses, 80% of the dollars of public works go to local businesses. When you look at service supplies and equipment, you again have a majority of the dollars, almost 68, almost 70% of the dollars are awarded to those companies that are based in Philadelphia, even though it's only 35% of the contract units. So the Procurement Department has met, most recently with the Greater Philadelphia Chamber of Commerce to get the word out, to attract more businesses to doing business with the city. They also participate in the Doing Business in the City program that the Office of Economic Opportunity runs on a monthly basis. It's the fourth Wednesday of the month, this is for the public, fourth Wednesday of the month, 2:00 to 4:00, at 16th and Arch, 18th floor. Procurement participates in that program and has done so for the past five years. So we are working more aggressively together to get the word out to a broader business community.
That is great. I will have to just say also there are other chambers of Commerce rather than just the Greater Philadelphia Chamber.
Yes, yes.
I mean, there's the Hispanic Chamber, the African-American Chamber, and of course, the Chamber of Commerce where I came from, the Greater Northeast Philadelphia Chamber of Commerce. So I would urge you to reach out to all the various chambers.
Absolutely. I will quickly add that we have strategic alliance partnerships with the African-American, the Asian-Hispanic Chambers of Commerce, and we'll be happy to come to your region of the city and visit other districts for council members who are interested in having their constituents learn more about how to do business with the city.
Also, you know, because I live in the Northeast, I also, as a councilman at large, represent the whole city, so I am concerned about that. But let me hone in a little more, there were only two bids on this printing contract, both of them from New Jersey, and it's not a good, this is a city of printers. If there's one thing we can talk about, is, I mean, it goes all the way back to Ben Franklin and beyond, and I know there are many printers that would like to have the opportunity to bid on this, what amounts to be a very simple contract, but a very important contract for
Absolutely.
for work in the city. I also want to share with Ms. Epps and his staff that the one thing I thought very successful from the viewpoint of the Northeast Philadelphia Chamber is we had a person who handled the regional area, and her name was Sandy King. She did an excellent job, outstanding job, but I will have to say, she really had many, many more clients and opportunity than I think she could physically get to. Is there any thought in time to have more Sandy Kings, more representatives of the Commerce Department that actually goes door-to-door in the neighborhoods and the shopping strip?
The answer is yes, there's thought, and the reality is that we are balanced in our allocation based upon the ability to participate in the challenged affordability of the city. So yes, and...
Karen Fegley, first, you were speaking about Sandy in past tense. She's still doing her work up there?
Yeah, no.
And we have just added one person to our business services team, so we do have our business services managers that are geographically dispersed around the city. That new person is not dedicated to the Northeast, but will be, you know, allows us to just split up the whole city better among the team.
And one last follow-up, the list of local businesses, can you, for procurement, can you share that with us so we can also take a look and see if...
We'll be happy to work with the Procurement Commissioner, who's right over there.
Okay.
We'll get the list for you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Sanchez?
I thank all of you, and really thank Mr. Epps, who has had the responsibility of visiting, I guess, all the commercial carters. Have you got through them all yet?
Not all, not all.
You still got some left to go?
I still got, you just see more of me than others, but
Oh, okay.
I've got a lot more to do.
I hope that's based on the need, your visits.
As I said to you, I learned a lot in your district last week.
Yes, no, and I appreciate folks coming out. So, you know, we've been talking about, you know, how do we begin to think outside the box and focus Commerce Department strengths on its strengths, and look at what ways we can leverage the limited resources that the Commerce Department invests. And one of the areas you and I have talked about, and I want to focus and start on commercial carters and we'll move to other areas, has been, in part because the mayor has made it a point that everybody should have a Passyunk Avenue, and we all agree, whether it's Maristogi, Juz. How do, you know, is the department, particularly on the capital side, and I've mentioned this to you before, what is the limitation with us partnering with our robust commercial carter managers and allowing them to do some of this capital projects that are behind schedule?
Well, I could give you a 101-day answer, or I could turn it over to the person who is more steeped in that history than I, so I will turn it over to Ms. Fegley.
Hi, Councilwoman. So we have, you and I have talked about this before, and this is not a new topic for anyone here to think about, right, how to get our capital projects to move quicker. We are grateful that at council's direction, we are able to direct $5 million in capital budget dollars towards commercial corridors each year, and we have been trying to try out, think outside the box, and different, you know, try different ways to do them. So a typical full-on streetscape project, right, with curbs and sidewalks and trees and benches and lights, is, it costs, we figure for, to do about five blocks, on average, probably costs about $3 million, and takes about three years when we talk about from beginning to end.
Unless we think outside the box.
Unless we think outside the box. And so what we've been trying to do is take some different approaches, but I think we need to find more. I'm open to ideas. But we have started partnering more with the Streets Department and Water Department to say, okay, are you already going into an area? Because if a project is already underway, let's add some beautification elements to that, some things that, you know, maybe aren't just about traffic and safety, but maybe are about the streetscape and the corridor. So we're trying to leverage those opportunities as much as possible. We are working with some of our, the city's outside agencies or quasi-agencies like PIDC, and actually, at your recent suggestion, we've contacted PRI to also see how we can use the redevelopment authorities' sort of workforce and contracting process to move some faster. In some cases, we have also contracted with the CDC or, you know, organization on the ground. So far, it has not proved very successful.
Okay, so that's what I need to know.
Yes.
What are the barriers that impede, because some of these guys are developers, they do development and they do construction. So what, is it, is it the restriction on our capital dollars that impedes their ability to get the projects done quickly?
No, no, it's really, I think, one, it is about capacity, right? So you want to make sure that the organization we're contracting with has on-staff capacity to manage a construction project. The other issue is that there, when they're doing a project that's in the public right-of-way, they still need to go through all of the approvals and clearances and reviews through the Streets Department, the utilities, you know, all of that stuff. And so we just haven't found that when it's being managed by, you know, a private organization that it necessarily happens quicker, and we think it may actually be a little slower than having our own Streets Department manage.
It cannot be slower than three years, Karen.
Well, there...
It took me three years to lobby for a contract, and then I got to wait three years. I'm two years in saying, folks, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. It can't be. It can't be. You know, I think this is an important conversation as we talk about procurement and kind of reforming all this stuff. You know, is it that we need to parcel out? So I understand the streetscape stuff, but it's what other things, you know, the store improvement stuff, what other things could we parcel out in a way that makes sense to get kind of the money on the ground? Because one of the things, you know, and I'm sure you've heard it out there, we heard it a little bit around reliable contractors, you know, the paperwork. And we heard paperwork, 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 like three or four times, including all of our quasi-organizations. So it's, you know, you can't be Commerce Department best practices and your contracting is not good. I mean, it's just not the right messaging. So...
So, again, first blush, it's not the Commerce Department, it's the city's processes.
We agree.
We are, so I'm taking a tried-and-true approach and going to form a mini cross-functional task force to challenge the status quo. And one of those will be on the way the city departments engage with one another to deliver services. Karen and Brian Abbott-Ante will be the co-chairs of it. And every function that touches a community project will be involved, and the issue is to take out steps to simplify, reduce, and speed up. So that will, the first meeting will take place sometime between now and May 15th. And then we'll begin about an action plan that will challenge the status quo. Probably won't be as far outside of the box as one would like because of some of the historical experiences that we'll also have to test.
I just think, again, as we talk about more borrowing and capital stuff, this council's been committed. We put $5 million. Sometimes we try to up it more, but it's just there, three, four, or five years out. And so I look forward to that.
I completely agree with you. I've learned it's taken way too long.
So I'm just gonna continue to...
Keep pushing.
I will.
I have no doubt.
No problems with that. Let's talk a little bit around, again, this is a reform streamlining. And I know the Revenue Department approves these for purposes of revenue projections, but what is the Commerce role going to be in streamlining all of the generous tax credit legislation that we've put forth? So whether it's Jump Start, whether it's tax credit for returning citizens, veterans, the new job creation. Again, as you talk to businesses, the ones who know about it, you got to submit the forms, you got to wait for the year to go, then you got to submit your payroll stuff. What role are you going to have in streamlining that? Because I feel like we go out there, we fight for all of these tax credits, Philly first off, and the process is that what makes it easy for revenue? And not, can these all be in one form? Some of them are asking the same questions. And they have to be submitted differently.
I totally agree, and I think that we, everyone recognizes there are improvements to be made. And I do think that our sort of interdepartmental task force is going to tackle some of those issues.
Is someone from Revenue going to sit at the table so that they don't make it more complicated?
Absolutely, yeah. It's all about making things business-friendly. You know, what can, what little things can we change? What big things can we change to make things, you know, provide better service to businesses?
We start with this, with the question of a form. Well, let's start with the question, does it have to be a form? I mean, could some of this stuff be done, you know, using technology?
It's different forms.
That's right. So we're gonna, we will address all of that.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Epps, I want to congratulate you on your new position in the public sector and also your work already. I know Councilman Parker talked about your work in reference to Cardone, but also I want to offer congratulations on your successful ability to work along with the mayor to keep air mark in the city of Philadelphia. I think that demonstrates the ability for the public sector to work quickly. Councilman Parker talked about, well, I think you provided kind of a snapshot of assessment of various entities within the city from your perspective and their ability to be either diverse in the C-suite, procurement, staffing, and others. Can you give a perspective in reference to what additional steps need to be taken once that snapshot had been produced?
Yes, but let me go back to the comment about air mark. Nothing gets done by one person. Two of the people at Commerce, Dwayne Baum and Sarah Merrow, were at the forefront of that. And one other comment I want to make about it is these private institutions have mastered the art of leveraging one entity, one city, against the other to extract maximum return. And so to the Councilwoman who talked about these aggressive incentives, I could make you an argument, we don't have enough, because for every one we win, we're losing one also because our package is not as competitive as others. And so when we start with a challenge of, you know, a debatable public education system, you put legitimate high taxes on top of it. You compensate for that with incentives. And our incentive portfolio is not all that great in relation to others.
And let me just follow up on that point. Has there been conversation with the Wolf Administration to do, because I'm, when you talked about New Jersey, I'm very cognizant of the issues they're having in New Jersey. In some ways, they are stealing the commos lunch in reference to the incentives they're providing.
That is correct.
Every week, I'm at a different corporation of business talking about different issues. And what I've been hearing about in New Jersey over and over again from the Sixers, Subaru, other development opportunities in New Jersey. So has that conversation occurred, been ongoing with the Wolf Administration?
The answer is yes, it is. And quite frankly, both at the state and city level, our response is going to be, we'll go after this one, and we're not going to go after that one because the return on investment or job creation is not enough for us to use our challenge resources. So we are going to choose to let some go by.
And then back into the original question in reference to next steps on that snapshot you talked about.
Yep, I did not forget. That's my favorite subject. Like anything else, it starts with will and desire. And so the good news in that experience was we did the assessment. The bad news is that out of 160 members of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, only 50 institutions responded. So that told me, and I was a bit cynical about it, is two-thirds of them had nothing but bad news, and so they chose to keep the bad news to themselves and did not report. All right? So you, it's hard to change a system voluntarily unless you want to change it. And we did not have any kind of mandates. In some cases, the city has a better opportunity to mandate change than the private, than the Chamber of Commerce did. So we, the city, the administration, the council, will have to choose the degree in which, I'll use this term, want to use this bully pulpit, to affect the change in this area. I argue we need to raise the bar on how we're willing to stand strong to get the outcomes we expect.
I cannot agree more. I've said several times in this chamber since my short time here that the city of Philadelphia needs a Maynard moment, Maynard being Maynard Jackson in reference to having that type of will of getting things done, because without the will, things will not occur. Along those same lines, I want to talk about, this is for Ms. Dowd-Burton, and also I see the Procurement Commissioners here, to talk about the work you're doing together collectively about trying to get the word out. It seems like we've been doing the same things over and over and over again. And although we have been making better results, it's still at a small level. So what creative things are we going to be doing going forward to really increase MWB participation? And if the Procurement Commissioner could come to the table as well?
So while the Procurement Commissioner is approaching, begin. One of the things the Office of Economic Opportunity launched this year was a benchmarking, I'll say initiative, with five cities and five states around the country. Our goal is to understand what kinds of steps Atlanta, Chicago, Baltimore, New York are taking and others are taking in order to sort of refresh their, their participation programs. Some are a lot broader than ours. Some of them are a lot deeper, they're older than ours is. And so one of the things that we really want to do is expand our outreach locally, but also look at how other states like New York and Illinois and Georgia, Delaware and New Jersey are reaching out in their markets. So we're going to be using the programs that Finance has elaborated on. One of the things that they are doing now is sending out RFP alerts. So you get registered on e-contract Philly, and if you're interested in particular business, you're getting alerts of those RFPs. I know the Procurement Department has a bidders list alert now that we have not traditionally had. I think it's maybe a year old, a year old. So there are some electronic things that we're doing. There are some physical things that we're doing to be out and about more in the communities. I mentioned to the Councilman that we're interested in not only doing, having a Doing Business with the City program downtown, but out in the districts so that we're reaching more of the businesses where they are.
I mean, that sounds nice. I think email alerts is good, and doing a study of what other cities are doing is also good, but that's kind of on the periphery. I guess my concern is that we're going, this body has been asked to vote on a sugar sweetened beverage tax that's going to provide significant dollars for parks, recreation, libraries, and other projects, and a rebuild initiative. To me, that's a significant capital program and opportunity for working with local and businesses of color to get active in that work. And it seems to me we're kind of dancing around the same issues. I don't think it's really fair for Mr. Epps to be put on the spot because he's still new to the city as well as Mr. Atkinson, but it seems like we're dancing around the same stuff over and over again. And what I see from some of those initiatives you're talking about is that businesses go through what I call the Wheel of Unfortune. I come down to a meeting downtown, I leave my business, I go to this program, that program, that program, talk to this person, then I'll talk to this person, then I'll talk to this person. They go through this wheel, the Wheel of Unfortune that I call. And they say, well, why did I even go to the workshop or the event when I could have been at my business trying to grow my existing business with my existing customers? And I think that's why people get discouraged in reference to participating in somebody's activities because they don't see a real benefit in going through that Wheel of Unfortune.
So Councilman Green, in this area, I will pass on the notion that I'm new because this has been at the forefront of my first 100 days because if there is to be the rebuild, we have to make sure, and you can guarantee that OEO and all other parts and Managing Directors Office and others, we have already had many meetings to talk about we must, we will ensure a significant different outcome than what we've historically had because where and with whom the money is going to be spent and in what neighborhoods it's intended to be. So on the workforce side, the appropriate conversations are being had. And on the procurement side, the appropriate goals are being set and strategies are being put in place to ensure that what I call the pre-construction phase, the construction phase, and even the post-construction phase have a much higher level of participation than we have historically had. Now, one of the things that I'm being taught is to pay attention to the disparity study. And in some cases, the data would say, whether we like it or not, the data would say that we are where we should be, but we don't buy that. We think we must do better, and I guarantee you, we will do better.
Well, I do have faith with you being in that role. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Ginn.
Hello, thank you very much. You know, per my colleagues' questions, I think I want to focus in on two vehicles to take a look at how we expand participation. And they start with the two different registries. And I guess one of the questions I have is to the extent in which the Commerce Department in particular is controlling the First Source Registry, so this is a registry for local Philadelphians. Is that within the Commerce Department's purview?
By Chief of Staff is our first-list expert, Sylvia Galye Howard, will respond to that question.
Hello.
Good afternoon. My name is Sylvia Galye Howard. I'm Chief of Staff, the Commerce Department. Yes, the First Source Registry is, we are the designated department for that legislation.
And when did you become the designated department?
I think shortly after legislation was passed, around 2012, '13.
Okay, so is there a First Source Registry? And how many businesses or individuals are indicated, are in it right now?
So we utilize Philadelphia Works as our designated agency for the registry. They use, they have a state database of folks who are on unemployment or have become unemployed. And we refer to them because we can't keep, we can't keep a registry where there's no capacity that we have. They already have such a thing, and they can filter it by Philadelphia residents. So what we have in place is a memorandum of understanding, an agreement, that folks go to Philadelphia Works and they refer individuals to people who have a First Source agreement.
And do we know how many First Source jobs have actually been filled by Philadelphians?
So at this point, we are monitoring two projects that have tax increment financing that fall under First Source, and that's the Gallery and the W Element Hotel. And there's no job creation yet because they're still under construction. And then in terms of the CDBG funding, we're working with OHCD. They, because that's federal funding, they have, it's called Section 3 requirements that trump First Source, but they actually do, under Section 3, make an effort to hire public housing residents. So we actually will be submitting a report at the end of April, and there's about, I think, 40 or so under that, but there's none under the tax increment financing yet.
Okay, so you'll submit a report in April, but how many reports have been submitted to council?
None to date. We've been implementing all the processes, and because we were not aware of any employment, we had not submitted a report yet. This will be our first report.
So the law was passed in, it was introduced in 2012 and passed when?
I'll have to get back to you on that. I'm not exactly sure.
But in the years that it has been in place, we've submitted zero reports so far?
That's correct. We've been working on establishing the systems for it.
And we do not have a local registry. We work with a state registry.
The state registry, but Philadelphia Works filters it by city residents.
Understood. And there have been no documented jobs as a result of the First Source legislation because they haven't been submitted yet. Is that right?
We, what we have is the number of jobs that, we, Section 3 counts under First Source according to our Law Department, so we have those numbers, but those are the only ones.
Okay. So that's another indication of where we're struggling on getting just basic employment. I think my Councilman really did a nice job, I guess, in the creative name of Wheel of Misfortune. But, you know, it's one of the areas where we have a vehicle at our fingertips, but it isn't being put to use. It's actually law, but we're struggling to make that happen. But to the extent that we can help make that become a truly robust vehicle to be able to track what is actually happening with residents. The second question that I had around registries is the MWB registry, obviously. And so, you know, there is the commitment that the income from the city contracts will go from 302 to 320 million. Are we on track for FY '16? Do you know what, where we're going to land on FY '16?
So for the first two quarters of FY...
Yes, it's a 190, but is that being, where are we going to end up if those are the numbers by FY '16?
It depends on how many more contracts we put in place. Those are commitments for contracts that have been awarded.
Are we on goal? Is it between 302 and 320? Is it below 302? Is it, where would we, I mean, we're third quarter almost.
So $190 million have been awarded mid-year. So if we replicate the volume of contracts awarded and the value that were awarded the second half of this year, then we'll be at our goal line or slightly above.
And what was that goal line for FY '16?
About 320.
Okay, so it says FY '17 is 320. So you're, there's no increase between '16 and '17?
So we're looking at, I'm sorry, we were at 302 million awarded in 2015.
Correct.
So we'll be slightly above 302 million. If our goal is to sustain where we were and we're spending the same amount of money that we were. Because our goal for '15 and '16 was 30% of our spend.
Well, 302 million isn't a 30% increase, though. I mean, you're saying that your goal is to see a 30% increase?
It's 30% of what we spend will be awarded to minorities and women.
So how would you then make the projection? So how would you then make the projection to 320, which is a fairly significant jump?
So our goal will be increasing from 30% in fiscal year '16 to 35% in fiscal year '17. And so we're basing those projections on that goal.
And I guess the vehicle to make sure that that happens is the MWB registry, right? Because those contracts can only count if those businesses are actually in the registry.
That's correct.
Okay. And so I guess what, some questions about when we look at the registry and sort of what's been going on, as we know, like contract procurement, while the money may have expanded, the percentage of African-American businesses has sharply declined. There has been an increase in the number of, oh, this is, I'm not talking about the registry, by the way, I'm talking about income and contract dollars accessed.
Contracts awarded.
Right. And I guess I'm really concerned about seeing a significant expansion in that area and wondering how specifically you're going to do that. And, you know, one area to just flag for you is that, you know, you divide between utilization and availability. And I assume that approximation towards utilization is slightly better than approximation towards availability, but if you look at Asian American businesses, for example, we're only, we're barely approximating availability and not utilization, so that would be an area to look at. But how else are you looking at expanding the registry in a meaningful way so that you could possibly get to 35%?
So we're not so much looking at expanding the registry, although that's a critical part. It's like the heartbeat of the Office of Economic Opportunity. What we're really looking at is encouraging more minority and women-owned businesses to bid and win contracts as primes. And those are larger portions of contracts that are being awarded and benefiting those businesses. So our trend over the last few years has been more companies, minority and women-owned businesses, are winning contracts, they're larger contracts, and they're operating as prime contractors.
Also, in the area of professional services, we are, we have significant opportunity for more contract awards. That's architects, engineers, legal, financial services, those areas where there are, there is capacity, no matter the ethnicity, that we can do more. And that's one of the areas in which we can see the ability to increase the spend number.
And just hoping that the department, if you consider the registry to be the heartbeat of OEO, that, you know, the representation around the diversity really needs to be taken a look at in a significant way and to the extent that we can use these vehicles, but it is, you know, we do have some tools to measure accountability, how we're progressing towards it, but if First Source is not really in play yet, and hopefully will be, but, you know, needing this registry to reflect and be a measure of how we get to where we want to be.
Let me just say one thing about the registry, and it goes back to what Councilman Tottenberger talked about. We could expand the registry in a way that would be conflictual for Philadelphians. And what I mean by that is some of the goals that were initially talked about, about registry expansion, would push us outside the capacity of qualified vendors in Philadelphia. We'd end up in Delaware and Maryland and New York, and that's not doing us any good. So we want to go deeper in our existing contracts and be prudent about registry expansion to where it benefits Philadelphians. Let New York take care of itself. We need to get more business into the hands, be it contracts or employees who reside in Philadelphia. So I'm not interested in expanding the registry to the point just to make numbers that does not benefit us.
Understood. And, you know, for clarity, I think the issue around the one area that I flagged around Asian Americans is that we're not expanding it to utilization. We're not, we're only looking at it in terms of we're barely meeting goals around just availability, so.
And we do recognize that we have different components. We have the Asian business community, the Hispanic business community, that are representing about 10% of our registry each, so those two represent only 20% of the registry. We're working with each of the chambers to encourage their companies to seek certification. We're working with the Eastern Minority Supplier Development Council to offer a discount on the cost of getting these small businesses certified so that they can be a part of the registry.
Understood. And I'll finish just by saying one last thing, which is I would encourage the department to look beyond the chambers of commerce. It is really important, I think that they're valuable additions, but if they've only gotten us this far, it is really important for us to go and look beyond the chambers of commerce to reach out into other venues with other entities that may not be able to access those chambers. They're not the only thing that's here, and if, I want to be cautious not to limit ourselves to that, and I will wait for the second round.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Dom.
Councilman Greenly, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And good luck, and I've known you from a previous life, both of us, but now we're here.
We volunteered. I volunteered to be elected.
I just have two quick questions. One is, in the area of technology, we have 14,000 jobs in tech, and I think it's a tremendous opportunity for us to build that whole area. Do you need more resources in your department in order to do that, or do you feel you have enough right now?
Well, of course, one could always use more resources, but we do have a plan for 2017 that we believe will increase our focus, tenacity, and results on improving our startup technology, Phase One business initiatives that will get us better results. I can assure you, at some point in the future, we'll be asking for more resources, but for now, I think we need to do a better job with what we have, and I think we can get a better outcome. Commerce was instrumental last year, and it got approved recently, Keystone Innovation Zone, coming from west of the river, straight down Market Street to Second and Nerd Street to induce through incentives people to reside in that quarter. That's one of the things, some other things we're doing in Commerce. We went to South by Southwest this year for the first time, so we're doing a better job of marketing Philadelphia as a startup. One of the indicators that things are kind of breaking our way is in the last couple of years, the retention rate of college grads has gone from 22% to 44%, so that's an indicator that we are at least building a better talent pipeline. So things like that give me encouragement that we'll see some better results, and then we'll build upon that, and yes, resources will be a part of it.
Because, you know, you're one department of government that has a tremendous return on investment, because building the base is key for us, bringing in more taxes, bringing more people here and having more people share in the services. So if you need something, please come back to us on that.
I guarantee you that.
Okay. Second question. You know, there's 21, 22, 23 different taxes. In your opinion, which one or two taxes are the biggest problems we have to attract business here and keep business here?
So two parts, three parts. It's been said a number of times that I chaired the Tax Task Force 2009, it's now fif, six, what is it, '16 going into '17. We have not done enough fast enough to embrace those recommendations. Number two, many of these cross-functional task forces that we are forming, one of them is around taxation, so Commerce, along with revenue, along with finance, are going to the table now to come up with an evaluation of present and recommend the changes to tax policy that will put us in a more competitive situation. But I'll answer your question. It is the business privilege tax and the wage tax that have historically and continue to make us non-competitive when we go to retain or more yet recruit new businesses. They don't want to true up the cost of their salary base for the, you know, $100,000 job they got, it gives about a $3,700 raise if they don't work here and they're going to, don't live here and they're going to, I'm sorry, they don't work here and now they want to move a job to Philadelphia. That's, and the cost of doing business here is higher than surrounding counties, Southern New Jersey and other places. So business privilege tax and wage tax. But we're going to take a clean sheet of paper and come back over the next few months with the recommendations on how over time to make us more competitive.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for all that you were doing, and certainly I'd love to say I have been met with you, but we worry you all every day. Just this morning, we were called out, and I don't usually mention to you Market Street, but we were called out by gentlemen at 60th and Market, the 63rd, and who talked about, when are we going to get our corridor manager? And look at this, we have a meeting tonight with regard to a bar they want to open that's wreaking havoc in the neighborhood. He talked about, right on Market Street, about, about issues underneath the, you know, the new L and the new big posts, they have trash next to, on all sides of each post that he worries somebody could drop something from the L and cause a problem, and, and it's just that we're doing a lot, and we appreciate what we're trying to do, especially in West and Southwest, and, but we've got to still consider that our corridors are really, all our main corridors are really, really important. And the other thing which, that I wanted to mention, which you all know, Philadelphia is really a destination point, but we've got to find a way to get more done with regard to monitoring, because if we can build big projects and we find out by accident that we're, that they're not being monitored, then we lose it. We do all this work to get laws done, make laws, say they have to meet these goals, and then when they don't meet them, and big institutions and big companies and such, and they don't do it, we're still in trouble. So we look forward to working with you on that. That's one of the main issues that we need to resolve.
So I'd like to make a comment back to you, Councilwoman Blackwell, and immediately take Councilman Dom up on his offer. So we, I asked Ms. Fegley to prepare for me today a projection over the next four years on what the budget calls for in all of the programs that we do for quarters, and then to tell me what it is she would like to have that is not yet in the five-year plan. And I had planned to come around to you all starting in September to see if I could get some help. I'm going to start today and let you know that it's coming. So we'd like to do more in the quarters, all right? Streetscape, storefront improvement, security cameras, and other programs beyond what we are being allocated for. We will respect this year's budget, but we're going to start early to let you know what it is we'd like to have for next year so we can get at it faster because the gap between the developed part of Philadelphia and the other part is getting wider, and part of this administration's goals, which we are fully committed to, is to do everything we can to close that gap. As it relates to compliance, you are absolutely correct. I've been on six-quarter visits, and I've got 12 more on my calendar now, and we'll want to get more. One of the problems we have in every department is we could do a better job of upholding the laws that are on the books and working more cohesively to ensure that our citizens and our businesses are getting what they expect from government. And we can just do a better job. We know that, and this cross-functional team is, and it's going, now it's going to test our will. Are we serious? Are we just talking? Because in order to make the change, we all will have to do it. City Council, police, water, LNI, Commerce, and others, I don't need to name them all, but you, whatever the problem is, it's multifunctional, it impacts the quarter, it impacts business, it impacts neighborhood, it impacts trust, and each quarter tours are teaching me what it is we need to do now. Are we willing to do it? Will be a different story.
Absolutely. We thank you, we understand what this issue of political will is, and we think yours is going to be one of the most exciting departments.
Thought are we.
And we look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good afternoon and welcome to these proceedings, Harold F. I will echo the sense of optimism and a new way of hope that I have with your leadership and your already proven track record on the private side of the ledger, and how you do know what political will looks like and why tenacity is going to matter as you seek to make what I would characterize as a paradigm shift in many parts of that department. I also want to thank you for the, explaining the expansion of the registry and the challenges, the pros and cons that come with that. I better understand that as well. I am not going to repeat what Councilwoman Sanchez and Councilman Green have already spoken to quite eloquently. I will only ask that, Councilman Jones posed a question to Nolan Atkinson, Mr. Nolan Atkinson, when he was testifying, and the question was, 24 months from now, or 36 months from now, if you had to ID three achievements, if you will, given your testimony, where do you see having indeed not just moved the needle, but moved the earth when it comes to all those issues that we've been talking about for 15 years?
Not too much pressure on him.
I tell you, I was prepared to answer moving the needle. I'm not sure as true I'm prepared to answer moving the earth. But the areas I think most critical, let's start with the one that will hold all Philadelphia back or send it forward, is we must not see that poverty number go up anymore. We've got many studies that say to get it down to 20%, we'd have to lift 100,000 people out of poverty. That is no small notion. But I do believe that working together, that number can stabilize and begin to head south. How far it heads south, don't know, but I'd be very disappointed if it did not head south. That's on one end. On the other end, we have got to get our citizens more documented education. That means a certificate, a degree, a license, or something that allows them to get a job above the poverty line.
Mm-hmm.
All right? So there are two things which, you know, the Pew Foundation and others measure all the time. What's our poverty rate? What's our income per capita? We need to get that, we need to get the poverty rate down, income per capita up, the education number up. And that, that's not a Commerce issue, that's across the board, but Commerce plays a part in that.
Of course.
So we've got to go recruit jobs. So another measure, we got, we ended January, 694,000 jobs. I've been telling my staff, when are we going to get over 700,000? The minute we get over 700,000, I'm going to ask them, when are we going to get to 725? So that, that job number, which gets to startups, which gets to ports, which gets to airport, which gets to, you know, recruiting and retention, the number of Philadelphians working must continue to rise. In spite of our growth, we lag the rest of the country by one percentage point.
One?
On, on job creation.
Okay.
So those things look great. If you would have, if this were a horse race between Boston, New York, and Washington, we'd still be in last place.
And so the role of the Commerce Department under your leadership towards the last goal that you articulated, where do you, where or what vehicles, what strategies, what tactics do you see putting in place to tackle that third initiative that you just spoke about?
Jobs?
Yes.
At the end of the day, everything we do is about, does it create a job? So the neighborhood quarters are to be revitalized, so more people and entrepreneurs choose to go into business. We have to educate people, they need to shop in the neighborhoods in which they reside. Therefore, those businesses are successful, and they hire people.
Mm-hmm.
I've got, we got people under Duane Bombs leadership that get out of there thinking about how we, I'll give you one example, and Adam will appreciate this, Councilman Dom. We're saying to companies that are located in the suburbs, right now, we're not trying to get your corporate headquarters, but because of where the talent is, and many of them do not want to reverse commute.
Yes.
We want you to open up a satellite office in Philadelphia.
Okay.
So that is a strategy that has got people working around it to make that happen. We're beginning to have, we have a team working on that.
And you have team professionals devoted to that?
That's right.
Okay.
Another one, startups, okay? We've got a couple of people that are, and that KIZ that was expanded.
Yes.
Was to give startups more ammunition to not only start the business in Philadelphia, but as they grow, to stay in Philadelphia.
Such as what? Ammunition, such as what?
Incentives.
Okay.
Okay, low-interest, no-interest loans.
Okay.
Those kinds of things. Job creation tax credits.
Okay. And so to, Angela, you spoke a lot about the meetings that you have been having. What has been the yield of those meetings? Where can you measure success as a result of those meetings?
So which meetings are you talking about? The Doing Business with the City?
Yes.
So we have more companies now who have won contracts with the city in fiscal year '15 than in the previous five years.
Okay.
So there were 563 companies. So there were 563 companies, minority and women-owned businesses that actually have at least one contract and many have several contracts.
As a result of those meetings?
As a result of learning how to do business with the city and really getting engaged.
And so you're saying they will continue?
We're saying, we're hoping that they'll bring their friends.
Okay.
The goal is to grow that, that pool of not only the registry, but those who are actually engaged in the procurement process and RFP process.
Mr. Epps, I'm sorry, you wanted to add to that?
Well, yeah, she can quote the exact number, but I'll just give you the frame. So if you were to go back four years, the percent of dollars that went to minority and women-owned business, I believe is like 26%. Is that right?
About four years ago, in professional services, 26%. It's now up to 39%.
Okay. So we, we track.
As an example.
We track, we've got more measures than you can ever shake a stick at. We'd be happy to send them to you. We track everything that says, are we getting an activity and a return on investment for the decisions, the actions and the taxpayers' money that we're spending? So we can tell you the top 50 African-American companies, Asian companies, Latino companies, women-owned companies and companies in general, where the business went last year. And we can also tell you over any period in the past and the target for 16 and 17 and the projections out through the first term of where we want to go. What we can't tell you is how much of that's going to be allocated to every ethnic group.
How many, how much is that going to be what?
How much is going to be allocated to every eth- ethnic group?
Oh, okay.
We have aspirational goals, but it, it, it will be based upon also what happens in minority companies and, you know, I've run a couple. As baby boomers age out, businesses are bought and sold often. And so a business can be a minority, a woman-owned business today and sold tomorrow. And when that happens, you've got to start over. So we, those challenges also exist in the minority and women-owned space.
Okay.
Because it's hard to get a liquidity then.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And the way, and often people's retirement is to sell the business.
Yes.
And when they sell it, they don't always turn it over to the same hands that had it before.
Gotcha.
And so if you have a contract of substantial size that's been in the hands of a minority of women-owned company and they sell it, you lose those dollars. You've got to go find somebody else.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Epps, I'm, I'm glad to hear that you're doing some of those initiatives in reference to focusing on startups and satellite offices. Uh, some of those things and those trends of looking for talent are some of the things I've been hearing from various corporations I've been talking to over the past number of weeks, knowing that they have a need to attract talent and talent is not as willing to, you know, work and live in 202 corridor or King of Prussia and wants to be more, in a more vibrant location. Um, a couple of quick things. I'm also very happy to hear that you did go to South, South by Southwest, those type of creative ideas of trying to market the city of Philadelphia. That's something that historically we have not done on the business side. We've done on a tourism side. If you see what Visit Philadelphia has done from when they started as a initiative under then Mayor Rendell to what they're doing now. However, the, they've been able to do that with an income stream. They have been using the hotel taxes as a way of providing dollars. So one of the things I've been trying to think of and, and work with you as well is trying to find some type of dedicated funding stream to provide the resources for the city to really market itself outside of, uh, the Philadelphia, into the suburban region, to other regions outside of, um, uh, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania and also on an international level. That's where the growth is. Um, I too often would see what I call the Andrew Cuomo commercials, come to New York, state of opportunity, we've all these tax breaks. And I'm not saying that we'll have the resources to do TV ads like that, but we still have ways that we can market the city of Philadelphia. So that takes me to the issue regarding the DNC, uh, which will be here in July 25th to 28th. Are there, there are going to be a number of corporations here. I've already had some conversations with people from different companies outside of Philadelphia will be coming here. Are we doing any way of marketing Philadelphia to companies coming to the DNC, considering that like the Navy Yard is not that far from, from the convention center and also Wells Fargo? Are we putting that stuff in place now?
Uh, yes, but we could do a better job. In fact, what's happening more so than the city is the region and we, and the city's got to do catch-up. So the answer is yes, but from a city perspective, we could do a better job and, and we will. Right now, it's, it's, it's more on a regional level.
Okay. Well, just from the perspective of talking with someone like Angela Vow, um, who's at, who's now working at the DNC from a, a staff perspective, I'm sorry, a host committee perspective, she can tell you which corporations are, you know, reserving different space in, for the DNC and just having information from just the Navy Yard. And that's something that should be in their, their packages so they can see, oh, this is some of the opportunities here in Philadelphia. So when they're thinking about expansion, thinking about doing type of things, they have the information there. And even during a tour during the convention week to the Navy Yard, I mean, that's a quick perspective that can be accommodated. And I think that's something that can be done.
That is a great suggestion. And by the way, uh, I appreciate some of the texts you've been sending me. Keep, keep them coming.
Yes. Um, the other thing I want to focus on, and I, I had some questions about procurement, but I know procurement will be here on April 20th, but I want to talk in reference to Ms. Alberton regarding to, regarding enforcement. What's the perspective of OEO regarding enforcement? And earlier I talked about the Wheel of Fortune. We also have what I call the mismatch game. Um, and I, I'm using that perspective because you have various firms of color subcontractors who get put on a, a bid or part of a participation range for an RFP and they, they think they may get the work later, but don't get the work. And there's various entities who have historically used that mismatch game process of including firms of color in their responses, but not really using them to do the work. So what has been done historically from an enforcement perspective and what's the perspective of OEO in that regard?
So we started our tenure with the city about six years ago and we made it very clear at that time until this day that we work closely with the Inspector General's office, the Controller's office. We work with operating departments to ensure that contracts that are put in place that there's compliance on. Now, there are 2,000 contracts let each year, over 2,000, let each year by the city. And if there are specific issues with contracts that you're aware of or colleagues here, um, members of council, we will be more than happy, as we have in the past, um, with Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown and others, to get the details of a particular issue that may be raised by a company, get the specifics in terms of their relationship, the contract that they're talking about, the operating department that they're engaged in, and identify what is the issue in that relationship? If there is a scam or a fraud, we will be more than happy to investigate and as we have in the past with UGI, with Horizon, um, with, uh, Betts and a number of other companies that have been investigated, BAC, um, where we have, um, had proceedings against them, had settlements with regard to their performance, um, on city contracts. JHK was debarred from the city, BAC was debarred. So there are actions that have been taken, but what we really need is a collaborative effort that says if you're identifying or if there are others that come to you that have identified issues, that they contact our office.
But the, I mean, what you describe as more of a reactive perspective, uh, from my understanding, most of those actions that you made reference to were initiated either through the IG's office or the Controller's office. What are you doing from a proactive perspective of letting minority firms, firms of color, WBEs know that if they are not being used to come talk to you around these issues and letting people know in the process?
So I want to, I want to, um, suggest that the IG's office identified the issue based on conversations with the Office of Economic Opportunity. And that the findings that we identify, either working with operating departments or talking to companies, we go to the Inspector General's office and solicit their engagement in investigating issues. We work with the Controller's office. Um, one of the, the reasons why we've done this, especially early on, was to make sure the market understood that we would not tolerate non-compliance. And that in, that is on the primes, prime contractor side of the house as well as the minority and women-owned business side of the house.
Uh, my time is up. Um, and I, I hear what you're saying, but the, um, actions speak louder than words. Um, it has, from my observation of being in, not this chair, but being in this, um, working in council for a number of years and even prior to OEO during the MBEC perspective, there really has not been that proactive nature of letting businesses know if issues come up, um, where to go. So I hope that'll be a new perspective going forward.
Absolutely.
And Councilwoman Green, we would take any suggestions, recommendations on how we can improve it from you or any, or any other person in council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gimm.
Well, I had a, a question about the Economic Opportunity Plan database.
Okay.
And, um, it, it has some data on, uh, compliance closed projects, those that are divided up by city, quasi-public and private. And it shows that the percentage of city, um, projects that met their goals was about a third. So two-thirds do not meet their goals as opposed to like 70% quasi-public and 60%, 63% private actually met goals. And that the percentage that missed the goals by a marginal amount is around 44%, a significant amount. So it's not like we're missing goals by huge amounts where, you know, it's impossible or we're off shooting. But, you know, I'm curious about to what extent the department is taking a look at why city projects in particular are not meeting their goals at such a significant level and how it's understanding this, um, kind of incremental area where it's missing them, what is going wrong and what we're doing to proactively fix it?
So if you look at the closed projects, yes, um, there are projects that met or exceeded goal was 36%. If you look at the active projects today, 64% of them right now are either meeting or exceeding their goal. Um, if you go down to the next line, you'll find those projects, closed projects that are within 5% of their goal is up 45%. So we're talking about 81% of the closed projects are within 5% of goal and a lot of that has to do with where we set and how we set goals. Um, and we do take a look at, are we setting the goals too aggressively? What else do we need to know about the project? We're working with the operating departments. And I think you'll see when you look at our active projects that we are making some inroads. Um, and there's still more work to be done, but that's how we're improving our, our performance.
So I guess, you know, um, my only feedback on that, um, is that I don't know that there's been a tremendous sentiment that the, that, that OEO has been, I mean, that, that we've been incredibly successful and robust in this effort and that we're being too aggressive around our expansive nature of it. And so I guess it's in part that this effort to meet the goals is not because we set our standards too high, but what more we can do to actually ensure that these projects have met goals and to try and understand them a little bit better. So, um, I commend the department that active projects are on par. I'm just concerned about what the past history has been and whether we're trying to understand the gap. So it's not so much that, um, we were close but didn't make it, but it's more like we continually fail to move the needle on so many people feel like we're not moving the needle far enough, fast enough on this issue. And so I don't want the approach to be, um, you know, we were almost there, but more like, you know, we needed to be there and we need to understand why we didn't get there. So, um, that's the one. The, um...
So Councilwoman, can I just, um, give one other comment? If you look at the top of that scale, you'll find that our goal was on average 27%. And that's in terms of the commitments that were made and, uh, the achievements. So we're continuing to raise the bar. Um, that's how we're going to sort of achieve our 30% and then moving on to 35% goal. So as we continue to raise the bar, um, the trajectory is going in the right direction. So we're looking forward to working with you and the business community to keep it in that direction.
Sure, absolutely.
So all of our measures basically say the same thing and that is we're going in the right direction, just not fast enough.
No, right. And I think that the feeling from the public and from many businesses is not that the city, you know, um, it's just that we have not done enough. And the attitude when we miss our goals shouldn't be, you know, we were almost there. It should really be understanding why didn't we meet them in order to assure the public that we're super aggressive about this and that we're reflective about the, the areas in which we're not making it. Again, I would say that if we were missing goals by 10, 20%, uh, we projected wrong and that kind of thing, but when we're missing goals by marginal amounts, then there's a problem that could have been solved in what seems to be more of a, a good way. I don't actually understand those facets, but it would be good to know. Um, and then one quick question on clarifying the First Source, uh, hiring, um, whether , uh, the, the hiring that was mentioned is permanent jobs because it's my understanding that, that First Source was supposed to be about permanent jobs. Appreciate the Commerce Director's attention to understanding that in order to lift people up out of poverty, um, we need to give them that. And First Source was supposed to be a great vehicle to ensure that Philadelphians got first shot at, um, at these jobs and that they were supposed to be permanent. So could you just clarify permanent versus not?
Um, I'll have to ask O H C D about the jobs that were created actually because I'm not certain about whether or not they were permanent jobs. Um, but First Source, as you know, is for, it's for beneficiaries of financial assistance. And, uh, so there's a limited number of, of First Source beneficiaries. And what we're doing in terms of the Talent Development Unit is being more proactive so that with, with First Source, beneficiaries are told, okay, if you get this financial assistance, you need to go to Philadelphia Works. You have to spend 10 days, you know, getting referrals, which is a great thing, but to them all seems like this is a hoop I need to jump through. We want to be more, this is, we want to help you create jobs. We want to help you hire Philadelphians. So with our Talent Development Unit, we're going to work very closely with Philadelphia Works to get employers to work with Philadelphia Works to hire Philadelphia residents.
Sure. I, I mean, you know, like, I think that's very important. It's, it's also really important on our end to make sure that we track it. And I believe that, um, to, if, if Commerce is the designated director for First Source, um, it is really important for us to, to ensure that all projects will, will be designated in that way and that, you know, an administrative imposition on say the W Hotel or the Gallery shouldn't be something on our directive to do, but that has to be proactive within, you know, Commerce makes sure that this is something that is done. But we'd love to work with you on that.
Absolutely agree. And we, and we are working with those projects. So once those jobs have been created.
And will the April report detail whether permanent, whether, how many permanent jobs were created?
Yes, yes. Once those jobs have been created, we will.
Thank you.
Councilman Tobin Berger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a follow-up because I don't think I was clear on this. In fact, I know I made an error. And I asked that your Office of Business Development in regards to procurement, that that list that you're, that, that you have helped in has potential opportunity to bid on, and there are Philadelphia firms that have opportunity to bid on Philadelphia, uh, contracts. If that could be shared with procurement, not necessarily with me. I actually kind of left the indication that I wanted the list. I don't want the list. I want the list to go to procurement so these Philadelphia companies could participate. So I want to be, want to be clear on that. Thank you. I do have, uh, one additional question I didn't have a chance to ask. It's my understanding that E Consult has done some analyzation on what it means financially for the city of Philadelphia to be a world heritage site. Have you had an opportunity to look at those numbers? Have they shared that with you or?
To be what kind of a site?
A, a world heritage site. We're the first in the United States to be a world heritage site and that means a lot for tourism dollars, Madam Chair.
Yes, yes, they have definitely shared that. The city has been a partner with Global Philadelphia Association and the World Heritage Project and, uh, Global Philadelphia Association asked the econ, uh, E Consult to produce, um, that report and they did that study.
In, in, in reviewing that, is, is there anything that could be added to the budget or moved around? or moved around to make sure we, as a city, capitalize on this recognition of being a world heritage site?
So we, we think that on the hospitality and tourism side, that the resources reside in other places. Uh, I think we said that, uh, as of Friday, we are hiring a, uh, Director of International Investment, and one of the roles that she will play, in this case it is a she, is helping to validate how we translate that world heritage and I, I would also say, say our relationship with our sister cities into a business outcome. We want to use those relationships with those cities to increase imports, exports, and try to see if there are entities in those cities, be it public or private, that have a need for a North American, uh, location, North Amer, Northeast United States location. And we want to influence them because of our partnerships to have them be Philadelphia. And we're in some dialogue with cities already that we think we may have some results over the next year.
I also just want to add that, uh, that, uh, the former Deputy Mayor Alan Greenberger, now Harold Epps will be, uh, Alan was involved in fundraising from foundations in the private sector, and we were able to raise somewhere around $300,000, um, that were not taxpayer dollars. And, and Harold will be involved in doing more of that fundraising. So we are raising dollars, but we're looking to do it from foundations and the private sector.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Will this new professional be reporting to you, Secretary Epps?
The, the international, it's in, it's in the department where it reports to Deputy Director Duane Baum directly.
I see. Okay, then. Uh, Councilwoman Blackwell?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd be, would be remiss if I did not introduce the head of PIDC who is here, John Grady in the back. Many people don't see him often, but we appreciate him and we need him and we use him more and more every day. So thank you for being here.
Uh, since you, I did not recognize that John was behind me, but let me just say, uh, this about PIDC, uh, having been by charter appointed to, by charter on the board, and that is about 50% of their loans last year were to minority and women owned businesses. And I can tell you coming from the African-American community that over the years with PCDC being closed, PIDC has had to earn a increasing favorable reputation within the minority community. And I want the word to get out that, uh, a great job is being done on supporting minority businesses from the loan portfolio inside of PIDC.
You want to add to that, too? Mr. President?
Thank, thank you, Councilwoman. Um, good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry, I haven't been around today. I've been making numerous stops across the city. Scheduling challenge. Um, a couple of quick questions. One, I just want to follow up on your reference to the percentage of loans out of PIDC. You said 50%. Was the 50% dollar value also? Was the 50% the number?
50% of the loans, not, not the dol, not the dollar value.
I need to know what the dollar figure is because it could be 50% in terms of number of loans, but the aggregate amount of money.
We'll get, yeah. We, we have that chart. We can get it to you.
Can you please?
Yeah.
Um, couple of local issues. Um, you know, everything's local. You have scheduled a number of tours on commercial quarters, I understand?
Yes.
So one of them, I believe it's on the 11th, is in my district of Germantown and Erie. Um, not that you would know that. I don't even know what I'm doing.
Right, exactly. But if you say so, I'll be there.
Yeah. So, uh, met with actually the Business Association from there two days ago in my office, and there were a number of issues with respects to, uh, all kinds of things, streets department related, parking authority related, um, general issues, cameras, whole nine yards.
Yep.
So my suggestion, and I'll just give it to you now and make it a lot easier than me sending you a request, that, that meeting not only be a tour, but we also have the pertinent individuals, and I actually had a list of things that they were concerned about. Uh, as a matter of fact, I actually already talked to LNI Commissioner. He was here yesterday. He said he would love to be a part of that. So I don't know if that would have to come from you as the Commerce Director or the Managing Director or from me, but I don't want to go out there and they give you a list of issues and then you gotta have a subsequent meeting to bring back the people who would ultimately be responsible. So that's always the way for my long, long history in government. You bring the commissioners out or they're designated and you get stuff done day one.
So it's, so, so, so two responses. One is, uh, Deputy Director Fegley will make sure that the right people are on that visit, but you were not in the room, I'll say, we'll say it again. As a result of past visits, if nothing else, what we've learned is that the need for cross-functional, cross-department integration is critical to solving a lot of the issues that affect our quarters and our businesses. Doesn't matter whether it's streets, lights, storefront, cameras, whatever, they often require cross-functional integration. There's a team being formed led by, uh, Ms. Fegley and Mr. Brian Abernathy to bring all functions to the table using real-life field examples that we have seen in multiple tours as problem resolution opportunities. So...
So you're saying that you've already done that in the tours you've had? I'm trying to understand what you're saying.
I'm saying two things. We'll, we'll bring the right people to your district, but we have already learned that we need a cross-functional team made up of all departments to solve this. We see the same problems across all districts.
Well, I know, I know they know that because, I mean, you're new. That's why I'm saying it to you.
Yeah, we're gonna do both.
So you know that?
Yes, uh, yes, absolutely.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to get the people out because I don't, I don't like having a bunch of meetings.
Right. I don't either.
Yeah, I'm like, bring everybody here and let's get it done. Um, other thing, my good friend, lights, those lights up on North Broad Street. You know you weren't getting out of here without me asking you about those lights. I, when, when are we gonna do something about it? I've gotten so much criticism. I have yet to talk, and Councilman could tell you, he's, I have yet to get a single person tell me that they'd like the lights on Broad Street. Um, it's like embarrassing. We spent like $16 million for this thing and you can't see them at night.
All right. Uh, Duane Baum, Deputy Commerce Director, uh, the, uh, the lights that sort of weren't very bright when they were, the custom-made lights, uh...
They were what?
They, they, as it turns out, they were custom-designed lights, so not very bright. We had meetings last, late last fall and other meetings early this year to come up with design solutions for that, which we believe we had come up with. We, we, uh, ordered new demonstration, um, lighting elements to be installed, and they were installed and they were defective and they've been sent back and will be reinstalled.
They were defective?
They were defective. They should be reinstalled within the next two weeks. In fact, um, maybe within the next week. I think it's before, I know there's another, oh, uh, tour along North Broad Street, um, and they should be in place on two different installations. And to the extent that they do what we believe they will do, uh, we've already, we will be ready to order immediately all the other, there are 41 light fixtures in total.
So, all right, now who, whose cost is that?
So the...
Cause I, I, from my perspective, they were defective on day one. So do we have to eat the cost of the additional fixtures?
Right. The defective fixtures, the two that were installed that were defective, they were sent back and will be replaced.
I'm not talking about those. I'm talking about all 40 of them. The, while we would put all those lights in the middle of North Broad Street, you can't even see them at night.
Yeah, the, the, there's, the additional cost for additional elements that we are installing, uh, they, those are, those are additional costs, which are actually pretty minimal. Uh, it's, um...
Who, minimal?
They're, we, we...
As in free? Huh? I'm just trying to say, the architect, somebody should be responsible. We had that presentation.
Yeah, the architectural, yeah, the archi, the architectural firm provided new design at no cost to us. The, the additional elements which we will add to the lights, not replace, but will add to the lights, uh, do add costs which are probably literally a couple hundred dollars per fixture. So not a big cost in the scheme of how expensive this entire project was. Uh, and that cost can be absorbed through the remaining contingency in the budget for construction costs. So it is, it is absorbed into the project cost.
Okay. And the streetscape, I just want to make sure because I know we had a conversation about, uh, cause right now there's not a single plant along Broad Street.
So I think there are two different parts to that. One is, uh, there is a punch list, uh, of items, including any sort of trees or other, uh, plants that were created have a, um, have a one-year warranty on them. And so, uh, the, they, some that are, have already been identified as non-viable are being replaced this spring. They can't be replaced quite yet. Uh, but there's a final walkthrough on the one-year anniversary, which will be, I think, in October of this year, and all, all will have to be sort of, uh, replaced and, uh, and living at that point. Uh, but I think the second part in the meeting that, that we had had in your office, which was despite the fact that whether all those plants are alive or not, there weren't enough of them, there wasn't enough landscaping really designed into this, and we are, uh, working with...
Yeah, they were like, they were like little Charlie Brown, uh, bushes.
Right, yes.
It was like embarrassing.
I remember you using that exact phrase. Uh, we are, we are working with, uh, we're funding, um, additional sort of architectural or, uh, design of landscaping design, and we're going to do that through, uh, uh, the North Broad Renaissance. Uh, they'll hold the contract for that.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
I have clarity, I need some clarity on Council, Council President's question. So ultimately, who's responsible for the fix of those lights? Is it on the city or is it on the architectural firm?
Uh, the, the architectural firm, we believe, has provided a design that works. Uh, we will not know that until we get working fixtures in place. Uh, to the extent that they have to be redesigned, that would, we would, we would call the architectural firm back for that additional redesign.
So ultimately, who will be responsible for the remedy or the fix of the lights?
Right. I think that that is a, a, a shared responsibility. We, we, the city will deliver an acceptable project to the extent that there is work that is needed by any of the professional firms, they will, we will require that of them as part of their contract.
What does the contract say?
We've added, we've added scope to the contract for this. So, uh, the contract requires them to provide us, uh, working fixtures.
Repeat your last sentence?
The, the, the contract requires the contract, the, uh, design team to provide us with design for fixtures that, uh, meet the city's, uh, acceptance.
Council President, uh, Councilwoman Blackwell?
Thank you. My question is similar in nature, and that is flags. I know I've been wearing city departments for about two years. We have about eight, uh, African and Caribbean flags that we've been asking for. That's why everybody has to go down on the northeast corner. You borrow a flag, you do your ceremony, and then you return the flag. But we've been asking, and I think there may be about 33 overall, there are flags that have worn out, there are flags that are missing, and we used to change them a few times a year. And I'm really hopeful that with the DNC coming here, that we will have, uh, countries represented. It's embarrassing when, uh, when people come and we have delegations here and so forth and so on, and, and their flag is missing or, or nonexistent. So we would like to know when we can expect that and can we get that stuff done? There are letters every place. We've been asking for it for about two, couple of years.
Any comment, reaction to that?
Um, so you're, you're referring to the flags on the parkway, correct?
Yes.
Yes, we, we'll, uh, that is a, an inter-agency sort of issue. Commerce works closely with City Rep and with the Managing Director's office, and we will follow up on that.
Please, and let us know. Hopefully we can get it before the DNC comes in.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, so I'm gonna ask again, who ultimately is responsible for the fix of the circumstance on North Broad Street? Who, and who, let me, let me back up because, because I too share, uh, some of the concerns raised by President Clark and thought, oh my gosh, who paid for this? Who approved this? So was that a Commerce Department decision?
Uh, the, the, the design was, um, uh, the Streets Department held the contract. Funding came through Commerce and we were part of the team.
So that was a Streets Department decision? Talking to the mic.
Right. So, well, the, the, the decision was, um, there was a, there was a whole collective, uh, design team from the city. It included this Commerce Department, there's no question, but we were involved. The Streets Department held the contracts because this was work on the public right-of-way. So they held the contracts for us using funding that we had procured, both city capital, some state RACP or state capital funding, um, and some state PennDOT funding. So there's a very significant amount of public funding that was put in place for that. We worked also closely with what had been Aven of the Arts and is now the successor organization, Aven, uh, North Broad Renaissance.
Very familiar with why they had to organize.
So there, so they have, they were from the very beginning of the design, the, it was the nonprofit organization that was actually acting as the advocate for this entire project.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, again, that sort, they shipped, handed off the baton very close to the end, but, um, but they sort of were on point to, they engaged the architectural firm. We did not.
Okay. So the nonprofit engaged the architectural firm?
Yes.
That clarity is important.
Yeah.
Okay.
They engaged them, and so again, a little bit of difficulty for, for us too, but we will, we're remedying, uh, again, we've identified the funding, um, um, yeah, uh, and, and, and the approvals again come from the, from both, because it's in a public right-of-way, both PennDOT and the Streets Department also must approve all details of design in that right-of-way. So we're, the, so the Commerce is on point to coordinate the solution. So I'm not trying to walk away from that. We believe the solution is working with, and we've got an agreement with the design team to deliver a design, which again, they have done. Uh, we can't demonstrate its success because we haven't installed the corrected fixtures yet, uh, but we believe we have a design. We've got the, the, um, lighting subcontractor, uh, also has agreed to sort of reinstall those fixtures, um, and is, and, um, so again, we, it's unfortunate. We had hoped to have this corrected a month ago, but the installed corrective fixture, for some reason, was defective. Whether that was from shipping, we don't quite know. The supplier is taking it back, replacing it, and we will install it again within the next 10 days. And at that point, we should know more definitively, is that the sort of right solution? We will, as part of that, we will, uh, be back out in an evening inspection with the design team, with, uh, North Broad Renaissance, with the Streets Department, all the sort of, uh, uh, organizations that were part of this sort of project to make sure that we are all, and that will include, um, uh, the Council President's office representatives, uh, to make sure that we have a solution that everyone can...
By when? A solution by when? Given all of those actors and all those stakeholders?
Well, again, my expectation is if we can have the lights, the corrective fixtures in two light fixtures installed within the next two weeks, we can schedule that immediately. It, as soon as it's dark, we can, we can sort of do the visual inspection. Uh, once, and once we sort of get a collective, yes, this is an improvement, we will order the remaining 39, um, elements and they will be, they can be with, installed within a 30-day period.
So as a, as a department, what are the lessons learned for that kind of expenditure that ended up having to be, uh, uh, is, is more than a retweak? It's, it's a redo in many respects.
Right.
What are the lessons learned by the department, given that level of, of expenditure?
Uh, well, sort of one lesson is that when you try to sort of create a unique fixture that has never been used anywhere before, uh, you run a grave risk that it's not going to do what you wanted it to do. Uh, and so, uh, and this fixture, uh, even by the Streets Department's sort of requirements, was not intended to illuminate the street. Uh, it was intended to be artistic and decorative.
At the cost of what?
Um, the cost was, uh, like in the $12 million range for the entire project. That includes these, the streets, the landscaping components as well as the, uh, the lighting components. But...
Okay. Um, so I'm gonna rest it there only because it's a district council person, but if I was a district council person, I would insist on seeing the yield, the, the bottom line remedy in writing on who's responsible for what, and because the question still has not been answered, ultimately, who pays for the redo? So we'll leave it there.
Right.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to offer testimony or to ask questions of Commerce? Okay, very well. Thank you all.